Thank you Charlie, thank you. Oh. Thank you. Yes, I, here Liz, I'm sorry. Do you mind putting one on Joe's desk? Thank you. Dave, Julia, do you guys need agendas? I realized I didn't pass them out. Sorry about that. Good to go? Okay. Jim, ready?
Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, April 25th, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families.
Thank you. Clerk Casey, can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Berica.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Ringus.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Here.
Counselor Reynolds.
Here.
Counselor Maglio.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien. Remotely, and Counselor Mackin is absent this evening.
Thank you Clerk Casey. We do have one council member participating remotely this evening, therefore, all votes will be by roll call. So tonight, we're going to start off with our council agendas, and I am delighted to welcome students here from Braintree High School. These students initiated an '84 chapter that they're going to tell us about through the Braintree Community Partnership. The '84 is a statewide movement of young people in Massachusetts fighting tobacco. I'd like to welcome them here tonight to tell the community about their recent experience at the State House. And then after their presentation, if they can remain, we do have some certificates of commendation to present them this evening. So at this time, I'd like to call the mentors or advisors to the groups as well. That's Lynn Frano and Mary Ann Barrett. And the students we have with us tonight are Bindi Patel, a senior at Braintree High, Varuni Senthakumar, a senior at Braintree High, Samantha Longabardi, a junior at Braintree High, and Andrew Fosco, who is a sophomore at Braintree High. So thank you all for being here this evening, and please come on up.
Thank you very much, President Berica, and thank you for having us here this evening. So as President Berica said, my name is Lynn Frano, and I am the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for the town of Braintree. I'm also chairperson of the opioid task force and the advisor to this wonderful group of students representing the '84 chapter here in Braintree. The '84 is a statewide movement of young people in Massachusetts fighting tobacco. And when the name '84 represents the number of people, the number of stu- the percentage, excuse me, of students in 2007, who did, when the chapters first started, who did not use cigarettes and other tobacco products. Right now, the number, the percentage is actually around 97 percent, which is excellent. However, the use of conventional tobacco products like cigarettes, cigars, and smokeless tobacco has declined significantly over the past 20 years or so because of effective public health policy. However, the tobacco industries have introduced flavored vape products and other types of products that are desirable to young people, and they have been preying on young people. They know that they can get young people addicted to nicotine, they'll have customers for life. So that is why we started an '84 chapter here in Braintree. So I'd like to ask Mary Ann Barrett, the other advisor, to come to the podium.
Hi, my name is, I'm sorry. My name is Mary Ann Barrett. I'm a member of the Braintree Community Partnership and also an advisor for the '84 chapter. Seven students from our chapter had an opportunity to visit the State House for the annual Kick Butts Day on March 30th. Four of the seven students are here tonight and are excited to share their kick butts experience with you. But before we start, we will introduce ourselves.
Hello, I'm Andrew Fosco, and I'm a freshman at Braintree High School.
Hello, my name is Bindi Patel, and I'm a senior at Braintree High School.
Hello, my name is Sam Longabardi, and I'm a junior at Braintree High School.
Hello, I'm Varuni Senthakumar, and I'm a senior at Braintree High.
Upon arrival to the State House, we saw a lot of similarly excited students from all over Massachusetts with shared passion for this cause. For all of us from Braintree, this is our first Kick Butts Day, and we couldn't wait to meet other students and share our stories with our legislators, as well as learn from them and their experiences.
After we registered, we entered the great hall and found the Braintree flag hanging proudly. It was very nice to see that much of the event was led by student leaders. These student leaders did an excellent job letting us know what to expect, and they also provided us with plenty of guidance. In the great hall, we prepared and practiced for our meetings with our legislators. Thank you.
Our first legislative meeting was with Representative Mark Cusack. We learned that he too attended Braintree High School and served a major role in getting flavored vape and other tobacco products banned from distribution in Massachusetts. He was very respectful, attentive, and listened to what we had to say. We talked about issues within our school and community related to mental health, vaping, and inequality, which we find often lead to an increase in substance misuse among our peers.
Representative Cusack proceeded to take time out of his busy schedule to give us a personal tour of the house chambers, where he educated us on the history of the house and the building. Most notably, we learned that the desks in the room had inkwells that were later used as ashtrays. These have now been covered up, showing the progress that Massachusetts has made towards making smoking history.
Afterward, Representative Cusack brought us to the senate chambers, where we were invited into a session. There Senators Walter Timelty and John Keenan briefly paused the discussion in the senate and informed their colleagues about why we were there and recognized our efforts within our community.
After that, we rejoined the students for our remaining events. Back in the great hall, we attended an awards ceremony where many dedicated students were our- sorry, many dedicated students were honored for their participation in the '84 movement. Their efforts are clearly noticed by the state officials.
At the end of the day, we all gathered in front of the State House for a rally where we held up signs, took pictures, and chanted loud enough for those in the nearby area to be aware of our cause.
Senator Keenan staff interviewed us for this video that he posted on his Twitter account. We were grateful that he shared our day with his many followers. We'd like to share, we'd like to share the tweet with you now.
Okay, so that means Lynn has to figure out- over here Bindi. Over here follow her. Okay, I may just fall. Should I put the screen? No, we have to put that. Put it across the line here. Go down. Put the screen over there. Yeah, put it over there.
Okay, clearly we have technical difficulties, and our apologies. So what we will do, I just want to say how proud I am of the students who joined us at the State House. They did a fantastic job, and I will be sure that I send you the tweet. They were so well spoken, and they represented the town of Braintree passionately, respectfully, and they were just phenomenal. So I just want to say how proud I am of them, and I want to thank them for being here tonight. Andrew, did you want to end with the last slide?
Okay.
That's okay.
Our chapter has a lot to do in the coming years. We plan to educate our peers and adults about the tobacco and vaping industry's marketing tactics, develop campaigns to discourage youth initiation of these products, and raise awareness about free cessation resources available to students in Massachusetts. Thank you for your time and having us here this evening. We truly appreciate all that you do for our community, and we hope we can continue with your help to have a positive impact on the young people in Braintree.
Thank you so much for being here tonight, and I think Lynn, you probably- was an understatement about how well represented Braintree was up at the State House with these students, and clearly unflappable. And not to worry, technical difficulties always occur, and we're so, so grateful you're here. So before we proceed with the commendations, I just want to offer up to my colleagues on the council, any questions for the students or comments? Counselor Ryan?
Yes, I just want to commend the students and the faculty for the great work that you're doing. And it's really nice to see young people in the town of Braintree trying to make a positive impact on their community, and I think it's wonderful. And I'm sorry you had the technical difficulties while you're doing it, but I always have technical difficulties, so I wouldn't worry about it. I think the technical difficulties were overcome by the musical chairs you were playing while you both- were all getting up to speak. I thought you did a wonderful job with that. So thank you so much for what you do and realizing that there's something important for you to stand up, and doing this at such a young age. I think it's wonderful and very commendable. Thank you.
Counselor Maglio?
Congratulations. What a great effort, a great piece of work. I will look forward to seeing the video. I'll go right onto Senator Keenan's Twitter page and watch it there, and I'm certainly happy to help amplify it. There was one statistic that you mentioned that I missed what it was for. What, there were 97 percent of students do not take up smoking now? Is that what it was, or?
So in 2007, when the '84 movement first started in Massachusetts, 84 percent of students, according to the Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey, report, reported that they did not use cigarettes and tobacco products. That percentage is now, according to the latest Youth Risk Behavior Survey, is up to almost 97 percent. And it's, you know, and it varies, obviously, from community to community. But we're, so we've done a really good job. I mean, I remember days when we could smoke at our desks, and there was a smoking area at Braintree High School when I went to Braintree High School in 1972. So things have progressed, and, but these companies are, you know, trying to entice young people, and it's groups like this that really help to fight that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for making such a difference.
Thank you.
Counselor Reynolds?
Dave, my congratulations to you students, and an exceptional display of citizenship, and you really give us a lot to encourage the future of our town, the future of our state and our country and the world as a whole. Folks like yourself having the courage to stand up and take these stands that are going to affect in a positive way your entire community. Thank you.
Counselor Ringus?
Thank you, President Berica. Thank you, you guys, for the work that you did. You, I think, piggybacking on some of the previous comments, you are wonderful stewards not only for Braintree High, but for the town of Braintree as a whole. So I'm glad to see that you guys are up there representing. It's very clear when you look around any high school or any local bar, you don't see cigarette butts on the ground anymore. It's always the vape cartridges. So the fact that you guys are sort of embracing this new challenge and encouraging your peers to disengage from what is just as much a dangerous behavior as smoking cigarettes was. So congratulations, and I hope you, wish you well in the future with this. Thank you.
Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. What a wonderful presentation. You did a great job, and what I'd like to say is that it is, it is really easy to complain and to say to yourself, well, that's a bad idea, but I'm just not going to do it, so it'll be okay. But when you take the time to band together and engage in the legislative process in this way, to make your voice heard and try to move the needle on an issue that's important to you, that's how this gets done. So congratulations to you on your hard work for your poise and confidence, and I'm sure that you'll be able to carry that and that skill with you in a lot of different ways in the future. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to read the certificate, and then what we'll do is we'll call you up, and then the council will come, and we'll take a photo with all of you in front of the desks, and thank you again for coming here tonight. So the commendations read, Bindi Patel, Varuni Senthakumar, Samantha Longabardi, Andrew Fosco, and the three students who weren't here, I'm going to read their names. Nitron, Madison Ketti, and Jonathan Lynn are recognized by the Braintree Town Council for educating their legislators about vaping and tobacco industry's tactics of targeting young people, the root causes of youth nicotine use in Braintree, and the resources needed to support nicotine cessation. Congratulations on your dedication on raising awareness. We wish you continued success in your future endeavors. So thank you for being here. And we'll get your certificates. Always a great way to start the meeting when we have our high school students with us. So a few other announcements this evening. I do want to announce, and I see Marika Coros in the audience, Braintree Beautification Day will be Saturday, April 29th. So this is a great opportunity for the entire community, residents, businesses, to come together, show our pride in the town. Please gather here. Join us at Town Hall at 8:00 AM on, again, Saturday, April 29th. We'll collect rakes, bags, work gloves from this location, and then spread out throughout the town. So this year, the target areas include Town Hall Mall, the grounds of the Historical Society, the beach and park at Sunset Lake, excuse me, Peniman Park on Cleveland Ave, Smith Beach, and Braintree High School Access Road. This event is going to be held, it's also with the help of the Braintree Rotary Club, the North Braintree Civic Association, and the East Braintree Civic Association. So thank you to those groups for their long time service in this effort. The rein date will be Saturday, May 6th. So questions, please direct them to the mayor's office. The phone number there is 781-794-8100, or you can call the rec center office at 781-794-8901. And again, Braintree Beautification Day, it's this Saturday, 8:00 AM at Town Hall. And thank you, I do see our rec guru here, Chris Griffin, is with us as well this evening, along with many of our department heads. Next item on the agenda. The budget review schedule is in the public record. All councils should have received a copy of it. The budget review will begin from, with our Ways and Means Committee, and I'd like to thank Chairman Reynolds and the committee members for their, in advance, for their work on the budget. So those will begin on May 4th. They'll be continuing throughout the entire month of May. If you're a resident who's interested in a particular department, please check out the town council documents. You can call the clerk of the council's office for the schedule. Different departments, the public hearings will be heard on different, or the public meetings will be on different evenings. Okay. Moving on, 02723, we do have an update from District 3 Counselor, Counselor Maglio on just where we're at with the Clean Harbors. I do want to let folks know, late in the day today, I did receive a fairly lengthy letter from Becky Underwood, the VP over at Clean Harbors. That letter will be, will add to the public documents afterwards. It came in very late today, so it was not in the record beforehand, but we will add that to the record. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Counselor Maglio for her update, and thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. So from the really happy announcement of the students to this, which is certainly not the happiest subject. But there has been some activities that have taken place. And in order just to set up the context, as everyone will recall, on February 28th and March 21st, Clean Harbors officials and state officials from the Department of Environmental Protection attended our council hearings here in the, at Town Hall regarding the Clean Harbors chemical fire at the Four River Basin. At that time, Clean Harbors assured us on the record and in front of DEP that there was no spill into the basin. Unfortunately, that does not appear to be the case. And for starters, there are a few things that we weren't made aware of at the time by either DEP or other industry officials. Evidently, Sitco had a gas spill the day before, so that was February 15th. At no time did anyone from DEP or Clean Harbors or Sitco ever raise that during any of these conversations. It was through people who are watching the filings and what is being posted that they're starting to connect the dots and seeing that there's more information and there's more to this story. So, so that's something that I'll get back to. In addition, just to kind of refresh people, there were nine trailers, four of them burned, and in two of them, the contents was recovered, and in the other two, the contents was not recovered. That's really important because the content were all chemical hazards. And there are many lists of all the potential chemicals that were there that were burning or recovered. So since that time, what needs to happen, there are a couple of different filings that take place. And in those filings, one of them being release abatement measures, and the other one being the immediate response action. That is a 3,400-page document. And as you can imagine, it takes a little while to go through these documents. But what we've done at the very beginning of these documents, as we're just kind of wading our way through, we saw that there were also three potential escape points for the firefighting water. And as I will remind everyone, we were told by DEP officials, as well as Clean Harbor officials, that there was no spillage. There was no water that got anywhere other than where it was supposed to be and where it could be contained and retained. And therefore, if no water got out, then there was no issue. That's actually not true. And this is according to these documents that they are in fact filing. So these are their inspectors and investigators who are filing these documents. Three potential escape points for firefighting water. One was by the temporary loading dock. The second was by the lunch building. And the third was the eastern boundary with the abutting Sitco property. Now, Sitco had an oil spill, a gas spill, the day before, and then they got this chemical toxic firewater the day of. The, the problem is that the firefighting water traveled from Clean Harbors to Sitco. It had 20,000 ppm of acetone. It then traveled back to Clean Harbors, where it had 13,000 parts per million. Meanwhile, some of it was released into the river, and since Sitco's water separator is designed to remove petroleum, some of this suspected toxic soup was released into the river. So the bottom line is, there was a lot of firefighting water on top of a spill that had already taken place, and we were told everything was contained and there were no spills and there were no issues. And what we're in fact finding out is that there were multiple points that the water, the firefighter water breached the berms, and that there was in fact a gas spill the day before. There was also signs of a milky white substance that was floating, and there's likely sediment from all of this on the basin floor. The air sampling was done following the fire using techniques that are only appropriate for screening during an active fire with smoke deposits, not for long-term residuals or off-gassing of contaminants. And that wasn't the protocol used in Ohio and Indiana in the two chemical fires they just had. It's deeply troubling that DEP allowed this technique to be used in Massachusetts. Air sampling was conducted a week after the fire, and not necessarily in the direct path of the major deposition trail. There were deposits that were made that you could see the trail. And the deposits were viewed on the Idle Well section of Weymouth, but there was no sampling done there. So we have a lot of questions that we need to continue to answer. And part of this process that we are involved in, and the reason that I have this level of detail is because of one of the next steps we took. What we did is we filed a public involvement petition. And that was filed by members of Quincy, Weymouth, and Braintree. And that was directly to Clean Harbors, which means they need to involve the public in the process of cleaning up contamination. We also, when we learned from DEP DEP that in fact there was a spill the day before from Sitco, we filed another PIP, Public Involvement Petition, with Sitco. So, both of these companies now have to hold meetings, answer questions, and it takes as long as it takes. If there's 100 people that each have 20 minutes' worth of question, well, then we're there for 100 times 20 minutes, so everybody can get their questions answered. So, those are really two important steps. But in addition to that, as people know, items will refer to the Public Safety Committee regarding the hydrants and the role of Board of Health, the PIP process. There is a full council list of questions and a report stemming from what we've learned so far. There is a plan for stakeholder involvement in the Emergency Prevention and Response Plans, which is where we're also getting, we're seeing that there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that area. And DPH, the Department of Public Health, has committed to coming out to East Braintree to a community meeting to meet with anyone and everyone who's interested, and they're going to provide information and answer questions about outside safety regarding gardening, eating what you grow in your garden, soil cleanliness, playground equipment, et cetera. And that's important wherever there's environmental threats. So, they have committed to doing that in addition to their own study and their own firsthand analysis of all of the data that's been turned in by Clean Harbors and their hired consultants, Tetra Tech. And what's important about that is that DEP has one set of regulations. Department of Public Health has a very different mandate. They are health-first, so they're not concerned with gas and oil infrastructure continuing to function over the health and safety of residents. They're concerned simply with the health and safety of residents. So, I think that's going to be a great opportunity for people to also ask their questions. And we'll see how many of these meetings we can hold. Well, there'll be a few meetings coming up. So, I will certainly make sure to post them on my pages, on council website, through the council, through the Mayor's Office, through every outlet we have, to make sure that people realize that this is about us, and we need to drive this, meaning we, all the residents of Braintree, need to drive this because no one's going to do it for us. So, that is my update.
Thank you very much, Councillor Maglio, and thank you for your advocacy on this issue. All right, next, next on our announcements, excuse me, is 02823, Council President, Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. So, as part of the town's ongoing effort to assess the current level of ADA, that's American with Disability Act, compliance and program service and activities in town-owned facilities, the Institute for Human-Centered Design has prepared a report. It's now available for viewing on the town's website. I would encourage anybody and everyone to take a look at that. Disability is one of those few things that really impacts probably every single one of us at some point in our lives. So, the report includes five public school buildings, nine municipal buildings, two of our fire stations, the police station, the cemetery, 19 outdoor facilities, and at every one of these locations, accessibilities and compliance was evaluated. So, I want to thank the Mayor and his staff for adding this report to the public record. I have requested that the Commission on Disabilities have the opportunity to review and comment on the documents before they are formally presented to the council, so that that group that has the lived experiences and are really experts in the area can weigh in first. That is on the agenda, I believe, for the Commission on Disabilities for May 1st. Also, a public meeting, people can tune in. And then we'll be looking forward to having the Mayor's Office return to the council thereafter for a fulsome report on that. So, please, again, please weigh in. It's a great opportunity for all of us to get involved with accessibility issues in town. Right, before we move on to communications, are there any other announcements from councilors? All right. Moving on to communications this evening, I'd like to welcome Merricka Coros for his attendance this evening for the fiscal '24 budget submission. I also want to recognize the department heads who are with us as well, so our Recreation Director, Chris Griffin, Town Solicitor, Crystal Huff, DPW Director, Jim Arsenal, and Assistant DPW Directors, Ben Hulk and John Thompson, our Finance Director, Ed Spellman, Dan Hickey, the Assistant to the Mayor, Kate Naughton, our Services Coordinator, and I also want to recognize our Town Auditor reporting to the Town Council, Sean McGoldrick is here as well. So, thank you for being here, Merricka Coros. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, Town Councilors. I want to thank Ed Spellman for working diligently to put together all of the budgets from each department head and having it presented prior to May 1st, so that we could get it to you as soon as possible. You should all have a blue binder before you. So, the fiscal year '24 operating budget is, total is $160,405,001, which is a 5.45% increase over 2023. Want to begin with, last night, one piece, obviously, a very important piece of the budget is our schools. And I want to stop by thanking Superintendent Lee, our school administration, and the school committee for their hard work on this budget. The school committee voted last night to fully fund the budget as recommended by Superintendent Lee. The fiscal year '24 budget is $74,732,868. In addition, the other school facilities and custodial services done by the town brings our education spending to $80,263,946, which is a 9.24% increase this fiscal year. Our town dedicates over 50% of our budget to education, as it should. Our investment continues to prioritize small class sizes in our elementary schools and provides the strong education we are so proud of in Braintree. We credit this great success to our dedicated, hard-working, and valued administrators, teachers, and support staff. This summer, we will be putting new roofs on Flaherty, Highlands, Hollis, and Liberty Elementary Schools. And we are excited to open the new South Middle School in the fall. This is just a sample of the capital projects underway. This is the biggest investment in our schools in a generation. As you make your way through the budget, I'd just like to highlight some other points. First of all, we are fully funding the budget. We are not making any cuts to positions. And in regards to our public safety, fully funding our police and fire departments. One of the things that we're able to do is create a new school resource officer. So, currently, we have one. We have, you know, quite a bit of need for another school resource officer, so that will certainly help with the safety of our schools, and it's been made a priority. Another thing that we have been talking about for years, I don't know, possibly back from the days when we sat on the Board of Select and Counsel Ryan, is to create a traffic division. One of the things as councilors, you probably hear on a regular basis, is issues with speeding and other issues in neighborhoods. This traffic division is going to be solely dedicated to dealing with those particular issues, so that we have less traffic, safer traffic, and we're able to make the neighborhoods a safer place. In addition, we have our firefighter headquarters in the final stages of design for our renovations, and look to be finishing that soon, as well as the fact that we have awarded the Public Safety Regional Dispatch Design to begin as soon as possible. And that's going to be quite a feat, and it's going to take a building that's been sitting offline for quite some time and put it to good use. Our Public Works Department, I can't say enough about our DPW. It's, without the DPW, our community wouldn't look as great as it does. They do so much for the community, and, you know, with Beautification Day coming, it's a perfect example of seeing the kind of great things that they do. As far as the budgeting that we've done over the past few years, we have made adjustments based on COVID-related issues that we've had. So, our local receipts, as you've watched over the last three years, have taken a tumble. We've made conservative estimates on those local receipts, and we're seeing the benefits of us budgeting conservatively in those local receipts, because now we're starting to see the ability to increase those numbers. This year, we should see approximately $1.3 million above what we budgeted last year, which allows us to look at those numbers in '24, and that's how they're reflected as well. Our enterprise funds, which you'll also be reviewing, are doing tremendous. Our Water and Sewer has a tremendous amount of retained earnings, and we are well on our way to building a tri-town regional treatment plant and doing a number of improvements on our water and sewer side as well. And our golf course, one thing benefit that came from COVID is our golf course is on track. And as some of you councilors may remember, three or four years ago, we were in a hole, and we, no pun intended, and now we are currently doing very well and moving forward with reserves. So, and lastly, our stormwater division is doing extremely well also. So, the outlook as we move forward, we are moving forward in a very positive way. And I believe that the budget that has been presented to you, that has been worked on by all of our department heads and really put together in the most respectful way, in a way that works to keep all of the services that our residents deserve to have every day, and keep our schools strong, is, has been presented to you. And I would first like to take a moment to just thank all of our town employees and each department head. Our town employees, each and every day, are the heart and soul of this community, the Town Hall community, which keeps things operating. So, I just wanted to say thank you to them. And to you, Madam President, and the Town Council, members of the Town Council, especially the Ways and Means Committee, thank you for the amount of work that you put in to review the budget. And on behalf of the town of Braintree, I respectfully ask for your support and approval as the budget is presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Merricka Coros. And I will echo the sentiment and thanking the town staff. They're not doing it for the money. They're doing it because they care deeply about our community. So, please, take a moment when you see a DPW worker out, or a police officer, or a firefighter, if you're in Town Hall, to say thank you to our town staff who work hard every day to keep our community safe and looking great, and are here for the residents day in and day out. And we'll be looking forward to diving into the budget in the coming months. So, thank you very much, Merricka Coros. All right, moving on to our old business. We do have two public hearings this evening. So, for those watching at home or here in the audience, I just want to explain the procedures for the public hearings. So, first, the council needs to vote to open the public hearings. Then, we will get the committee's recommendation. We'll hear from town staff and councilors. After that, we will open it up to anyone from the public who wishes to speak. We generally allow five minutes under our Town Council rules for formal public hearings. After the public comment, the council has to vote to close the public hearing, and then finally, we will vote on the matter at hand. So, again, thank you to all the department heads and folks joining us here this evening. All right, so the first item is 22037, Council President, Tree Protection Ordinance, or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22037?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, a roll call, please, to open the public hearing.
Councillor Berwick.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Hume.
Aye.
Councillor Maglio. Councillor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councillor O'Brien. Councillor O'Brien. We might have some technical difficulty. We'll get him back on the line. And Councillor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councillor Ringas.
Aye.
And Councillor Ryan. Did I do that wrong? Reynolds, Ringas, and Ryan. Okay. I'm going to go back to O'Brien. I'll mock him once I get back to him.
Am I okay to proceed then, Clerk Casey?
Pardon me?
I can proceed.
Oh, you can proceed.
Thank you.
Yes, you may.
All right, thank you very much. I will turn it over to Councillor Ringas, Chairman of the Committee of Ordinance and Rules, for that committee's recommendation on Order 22037.
Thank you, President Berwick. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules did meet on this item number. We voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Thank you very much. This time, Merricka Coros?
Councillor, excuse me, Council President, Council Brian, just announcing, so present. Okay, we're all present. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, councilors. I just want to take a moment and, first of all, thank the Council President for putting this ordinance together. It's not an easy task, creating an ordinance, and there was a lot of feedback that went into this particular ordinance. And, you know, I appreciate your patience and your hard work on this, and it truly is going to be a great success. And I stand before you in support of this, and thank you for all of the hard work and effort that you put into this to make it happen and come before you today. But just so everybody understands, I mean, there was many, many hours that the Council President put in to making sure that every department head was aware of exactly how we were going to do this, and I think we came out with a great work product in the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Merricka Coros. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I want to say thank you again and extend my thanks to the DPW Director, Jim Arsenal, Assistant Director, Ben Hulk, Town Solicitor, Crystal Huff, and along with many, many individual residents, Sustainable Braintree, Beld, and many others who helped work collaboratively over the last year to really help craft a public tree protection ordinance that compels a public process, including a transparent and timely notification if a public shade tree must be removed. As well, it installs a formal mechanism to replace those trees. So, really, the idea here is that in cases when trees must be removed, residents will know why and when, and that there will be accountability for replacement. A few things I do want to point out, this ordinance will apply only to public trees that are along the town's public ways. And on town-owned land, excuse me, that's not under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So, that includes places like the school grounds and French's Common, for instance. It does not apply to residents' yards or other private property. Notification must be posted on the trees to be removed. They must be posted in at least two public places in town, and notification must be provided to the district councillor. And then, replacement trees must be planted within 18 months in close proximity to where the trees were removed. If replacement nearby is impossible, payment into a tree fund will be required. You will see, councilors, on tonight's agenda, a referral to the Ways and Means Committee for the establishment of a revolving fund intended for the monies for a future tree replacement fund. And to be clear, the town is not expected to pay into its own tree fund. Rather, the future fund will be established so that large-scale developers who may be clearing land will be required to pay into the tree fund as a component of a site plan review process. That's going to be part two. That is being worked on in the coming months. And again, I'd like to sincerely thank Chairman Ringas and the members of the Ordinance and Rules Committee, Council- Rules Committee, Councilor Hume, Councilor Ryan, Councilor Flaherty. Your feedback early on in the process was instrumental in getting us to where we are today. It has truly been a team effort with community-wide feedback. So thank you, and thank you for your support. And I ask for your support this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend you for this well-thought-out policy. You know, we have to take care of the trees in Braintree. I've seen it, you know, some good plans have unintended consequences, where we want to do roadways over, and you could have a tree-lined thoroughfare, and the trees would be buckling the sidewalks, and everybody would say, we have to fix these sidewalks, we have to fix this street, we have to make, you know, people are going to get hurt. And then you do the street over, and everybody's like, where are all the trees? It's you've changed the whole character of the roadway. And I can name Elmwood Street right around the corner from where you grew up, Council Reynolds. And it was a tree-lined roadway that was really changed. So if we can make sure that we're looking out for the trees, and we have an ordinance that's looking out for the trees, and we can reestablish trees, I think it's a great thing for the town of Braintree. And I just want to commend you for putting this together.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ringus?
Thank you, Council President. I think I would just commend you as well. Obviously, the crafting of an ordinance is a long-term process, especially one that we're creating basically from scratch. And there was a lot of feedback that you took from our initial meetings at Ordinance and Rules, and then from other town departments, and also from residents. And what you came together with was a, I think, a very strong ordinance that is going to do a lot for the town as we move forward. One of the things we consistently hear is that folks want to see our town sort of look like that small-town character. And one of the things that any sort of small-town has is those that tree coverage. So there's that aesthetic value. There's also sort of the health benefits that go with it as well of having, you know, a good tree cover in a community. I think, again, it took a little bit to get here, but as I noted at the Ordinance and Rules meeting, we are now three days away from Arbor Day. So it's sort of fitting that we'd be approving this tonight. So again, thank you for your work on this, and I will be supporting it again tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus. Counselor Flaherty?
You know, at this point, I think I've seen a few versions of this. And I know that a lot of expertise from a number of different corners went into it. So I think it's a very well-thought-out ordinance that speaks to a very fundamental thought, which is, when you chop down a tree, you should replant one. And I think we should be doing that in Braintree. And this ordinance will ensure that we do. So from a, I'll also mention that from the master plan committee, one of the things that residents commonly raise is they want our tree canopy to be healthy for our town. And this ordinance will contribute to ensuring that that is so. So I'll have my full support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I fully intend in supporting this. I think that as other speakers have pointed out, that there are a lot of good research and thoroughness has been put into this effort. And I think that as some of the benefits that were cited by some of the previous speakers, I would concur, you know, in this day and age, trees are a necessity that we have overlooked and taken for granted in our environment, and also in the beautification of our community and how the character of our town has been depicted through the years. I did have just one question for clarification.
Sure.
And I do know that a tree comes down, a tree must be replaced. I agree with that. Could you just explain a little bit the considerations with the power lines and maintenance of the power lines?
Yep, that's a great question. And actually, my, one of my first stops as I was beginning this process was with Beld and their vegetation management team. So one of the, one of the things that this ordinance establishes is a tree committee. And on that committee must be a Beld board member. And that, the reason for that is because our power, as we all know, stays on in Braintree. And the, one of the number-one reasons power lines go down is for trees. So making sure that Beld and the Beld Board is involved in any decisions where trees are being planted, I feel is really paramount to not only the success of this ordinance, but also making sure that the electricity we rely on stays reliable. So that's going to be a fundamental component of any replacement plan will be involving Beld and the Beld Vegetation Management Team.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very happy to hear that. It doesn't surprise me the thoroughness in being able to consider that very important factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maglio?
I just want to say a quick thank you. And thank you for this tree ordinance, and also thank you for showing how public policy really can make a difference and have an impact in a community. And trees are, trees are life. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maglio. And I, I'll just offer that this began because four residents came to me about trees that had gotten taken down. And I just want to reiterate to residents that we listen, your voice matters, and sometimes things take a really long time. But this idea came from residents, and I'm absolutely delighted to cut it to the point it's at right now. So thank you for that. Okay, if there's no other comments from councilors, I would like to offer, if there's anyone from the general public who would like to speak, you may come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you for your time. My name is Sabina Keefe. My address is 25 BV French Street. So I don't know if I actually need to be here because you all agree with this, but I'm a, I'll say it anyway.
Thank you for coming.
Of course. I'm a board-certified pediatrician and a proud Braintree resident for the past seven years. I also have two beautiful kids who love to live in Braintree, and they tell everybody about it. I'm here to say that I strongly support the tree ordinance that Council President has proposed. So coming from a pediatrician's side, many studies have shown that the benefits that trees have in a community, not only do more trees equal less crime, but more trees also mean happier, healthier residents, not only for kids but also for adults. In addition to filtering our air, trees provide shade, improve mood, and reduce anxiety. Children especially bear the brunt of lack of trees in their neighborhood. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends daily outdoor time for children, both for physical as well as mental benefits. But studies have shown that less trees equal less outdoor time. This ordinance would limit the number of trees cut down, obviously. And the American Academy of Pediatrics Policy Statement, excuse me, from 2021 states that infants and younger kids are uniquely sensitive to air pollution due to their growing organs. Poor air quality is known to trigger asthma and likely cause lower birth weight and lower IQ. Though these problems require multiple solutions, keeping mature trees is an important one. One might think that by planting a tree for one cut down, that there's no loss, but there certainly is. Larger and older trees draw down more carbon from the atmosphere than younger ones. They also provide more in longstanding homes for animals, which all help us feel connected in a really disconnected world, I think. Of course, we should plant new trees. We should always plant new trees, but not at the expense of established ones. Our children and their children deserve a Braintree that's better than the one today, as great as it is. And they need many, many trees to be able to do that. So thank you, Council President, for introducing this ordinance and for talking with me. I would also like to thank the DPW for their work, absolutely. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keefe. Any other members of the public wish to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. With that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for order 22037?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, a motion, a roll call to close the public hearing.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, all councilors should have a printed copy of order 22037 at their desks. And I would ask now, is there a motion for order 22037?
Yes. Motion to approve order 22037, Council President, tree protection ordinance as submitted.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues and to the mayor's office as well. All right, moving on. Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to our next public hearing for the evening, 22, 23013, Mayor Discontinuance of King Hill Road, tri-town water treatment plant or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for order 23013?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you very much. With that, I will turn to Counselor Ryan, Chairman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works, for their recommendation on order 23013.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, the Committee on the Department of Public Works met and voted unanimously to recommend favorable action to the full council for 23013.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ryan. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this order? Solicitor Huff?
Good evening, Madam President, if I may?
Please.
Floor is yours. Okay, thank you. So what you have in front of you today is a petition to discontinue a small portion of King Hill Road. As you know, that we're, the tri-town is in the process of building a new water treatment plant. And where the water treatment plant is located is in the middle of what has been put forth in deeds as King Hill Road. This road actually doesn't exist on the ground. We call it a paper street because it only exists in the deeds. So when the, when the land over there was divided into several parcels, at that time, this was in 1922, at that time, they, they laid, they laid out a road in the deed. However, that roadway was never accepted by the town, and it's never been constructed. And currently, where the new treatment plant is going to be located is smack dab in the middle of this road. So as, to remove a practical hurdle for construction, as well as to bring the site into compliance with the planning board's conditions, a small portion of this, of this roadway that doesn't actually exist on the ground, that only exists through the deeds, needs to be removed. So what you have in front of you, there should be recommendations from the DPW, from the planning board, there should be a memorandum from the mayor's office, and there's also a petition there, which kind of describes what and why we're doing this. And the exhibits to the petition, exhibit one, is the discontinuance itself. And I have a large copy of that for everybody to see here. You can see that the way that we are, the portion of the road that we're seeking to discontinue is shaded in gray here. And that's exhibit one. Exhibit two is the meets and bounds description of the portion of the way that's being discontinued. And exhibit three is an illustrative lotting plan to show you the location, the proposed location of the new treatment plant in relation to what is known as King Hill Road. So, so essentially, you know, what we're here to do today is just to sort of check off another one of these boxes of things that we have to do in preparation and in conjunction with construction. And removing this section of the road will, will help bring the parcel into zoning compliance, as well as, again, removing a practical portion of construction. The portion of the roadway which is being discontinued is not accessible to the public. And it is also, again, it has never been built as well. So this is all within the portion of the property that has been, you know, for the use of the Braintree Water Department. And there's been no public access to this area. There is a portion of King Hill Road that is publicly accepted, that was accepted by town meeting, I believe, in 1947. And that is not next, that is not the area that we're seeking to discontinue. So just to give you an idea, you know, it's really, it's a, it's a portion of the way that travels through where the new treatment plant is going to be located and a little bit farther beyond that as well. So.
Thank you, Solicitor Huff.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is really just a housekeeping issue that we have a paper street. Paper street is only in existence on the piece of paper that it's on. It's, it's not a railroadway. I have a paper street next to my house, so I know about these things. So it's really right down the middle where the new treatment plant is going to be built is this paper street. We're really just, it's a housekeeping item tonight, so I'm going to fully support making this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Flaherty, and then Counselor Maglio. Counselor Flaherty?
So because King Hill Road is in District One, I just thought it was worth clarifying to residents, if it's not already, that this measure to discontinue King Hill Road only applies to a portion of King Hill Road that exists only on paper and only beyond the gate that has long been in place at the end of the residential portion of King Hill, dividing it from the water treatment plant that stands on the property beyond the gate. And it will in no way change access to the portion of the road that people live on or travel along to get to the Sons of Italy. So, you know, considering that, it is, as Counselor Ryan has already mentioned, mainly a housekeeping, a housekeeping effort that is needed to make way for the water treatment plant. Residents should be comfortable knowing that it's not going to affect their access to their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. You're all set? Okay. Any other councilors? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none. I would make, is there a motion to close the public hearing for order 23013?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call to close the public hearing, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for order 23013?
Yes. Motion, discontinuance of a portion of King Hill Road at the request of the tri-town water district, that the town council vote to accept the discontinuance of a portion of King Hill Road that pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21, the town council moves that a portion of King Hill Road laid out by deed dated March 30, 1922, never accepted by the town as a public way, and is further shown on a plan of, plan of land dated November 15, 2022, prepared by Jared S. Johnson, PLS, entitled Discontinuance Plan of Land for the Tri-Town Water District, 300 King Hill Road, Braintree, Massachusetts, described by the meets and bounds as submitted, and is hereby discontinued as a private way. And any public easement to travel in or over the area of discontinuance is hereby discontinued. Further, the town hereby releases its rights of travel in and over the area of discontinuance. The section of King Hill Road previously accepted as a public way and outside of the above-described area of discontinuance shall remain a public way. So moved.
Second. Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Macken, oh, he's absent. Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to the treatment plant being built. All right, our next item of business this evening is 23023, Mayor, Appointment, Margaret Laforese to Chief of Staff and Director of Operations or Take Up Any Action Relative There To. I will refer to Counsel Reynolds, the Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met and voted, two in favor, one abstained, for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order 23023.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Counsel Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who'd like to speak? Mary Kacoros, welcome back.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to ask for your support for my appointment of Margaret La Forest for my Chief of Staff and Director of Operations. Margaret is a breath of fresh air, to be honest with you, and I've known her for many years, the years that she served on the Quincy City Council, and admired all the hard work that she did for her constituents there. More recently, we worked directly with Margaret on trying to find life science to come to Braintree and landed Integra, which is the biggest life science company that we've been able to bring to the town of Braintree, and it was through the combined efforts of her position that she had at the time with the state and her due diligence and hard work. And she probably brought us half a dozen different companies over that course of time, and she never gave up. But I think that what's most important is she possesses many great qualities, and having been a counselor, she understands the perspective that you have as being a counselor, and is going to do a great job at taking in the correspondence and making sure that you get answers to things, and really will do a great job at that and understands that you need those answers for our constituents. In addition to that, I think that if you talk with her, you'll see that she moves at a very fast pace, she learns very quickly, and she has hit the ground running in the interim position at this point. And another thing is her, another strength she has is with budgeting as well, and between her budgeting skills and economic development strengths, she will be a great asset to our community. And I am excited to be before you tonight and have a replacement for my Chief of Staff position. My mother told me that I looked tired, and I said, "Well, Ma, I don't have a Chief of Staff," and she says, "You're not going to be tired anymore." So, but I just stand before you and ask for your favorable vote on this tonight, and I thank Margaret for stepping up in raising her hand for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kacoros. Any council members wish to speak or questions? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I'll be fully supporting this motion tonight. I've known Margaret for many years. I first met Margaret as she was a city counselor in the city of Quincy, and in my full-time job, I have a facility that I operate and maintain in Margaret's district in Quincy. And I met her one night at a community advisory committee when she came down, and she was making sure that we were doing our job to keep the facility properly operating and maintaining the grounds, because it's a great place. It's right on the water in Quincy where people like to come and enjoy, take a walk. And right then and there, I knew Margaret knew how to deal with folks. She was, she got her point across, and I liked her after I met her, so she did a good job in that. And I was very impressed as I met her more recently as well, and when she came before the council for this life science that Mary Kacoros mentioned. And I think Margaret, you have very big shoes to fill from Nicole Toob, the departed Chief of Staff, that we all, I think, thought did a very good job. And, but I'm really happy to see that you've accepted this position, and I want to offer any, you know, spirit of cooperation, if there's any work we can do with you to help make you transition into the job. I'm very excited to see you here, and I wish you the best of luck, and I'll fully support your appointment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other counselors? Counselor Ringus?
Good evening, and thank you, President Berrika. I will second what Counselor Ryan had just said. I do not know you as well as Counselor Ryan, but obviously, your experience speaks for itself. One of the things that we're going to be seeking in town in looking for new revenues is attracting new businesses, and obviously, your resume speaks for itself in terms of your ability to do so. So I think, I look forward to working with you on that end and ensuring that we can continue to find new revenue streams to bring to town as we move forward in a tough budget season. So thank you, and looking forward to the future.
Counselor Maglio?
I too would like to welcome you. We had an opportunity to spend about two hours driving around in my district, and it was really a good opportunity to kind of get your feeling about things and kind of get your reactions on the fly, and I am really excited about the flow of information and communication that can take place. And as we talked about, the more successful you are, the more successful we are as a town, so I'm looking forward to voting for you tonight, and let me know how I can support you as well.
Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. Margaret, I wish you the best of luck. I know what you're going to be up for and in for, so I think you're going to be a true asset to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. I have had an opportunity to meet Ms. La Forest on a couple of occasions, and in my experience, she, you are friendly, knowledgeable, helpful, and proactive in the work that you do in the office in the few days that you have been here with us. So I am grateful that you took the job, and I welcome you aboard. I think you're going to be a real asset to Braintree, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. I will echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Really, great job, Mr. Mayor, great hire. I'm in full support of Ms. La Forest's appointment this evening, and really impressed and appreciative of the proactive outreach that we've received as counselors, and looking forward to a great working relationship, and also very appreciative that you chose a former counselor to be your Chief of Staff. So thank you, and I will be fully supporting your appointment this evening.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Is, with that, is there a motion on the table?
So, the motion is upon the request of His Honor, the Mayor, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with Sections 3-3 of the Charter of the Town of Braintree, approves the appointment of Margaret La Forest to Chief of Staff and Director of Operations. So moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berrika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to our next appointment this evening, 23024, Mayor, Appointment of Michael Guerrero to the Braintree Housing Authority or take up any action relative thereto. I again will turn to Chairman Reynolds of the Committee of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means previously met and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order 23024.
Thank you very much, Counsel Reynolds. Would anyone on the council, or I'm sorry, the mayor's office, like to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the previous recommendation and vote as well. And thank you for the recommendation on this as well. This is a, an appointment for the Housing Authority that the individual has to live within one of the units in the Housing Authority, and I ask for your full support for this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Kacoros. Is there any member of the council who would like to speak on this? Okay, I just would like to take a moment. I did a little looking into the Braintree Housing Authority before this evening, and I want to reiterate, because I don't think a lot of people know, I'm going to use this minute to let folks know, that the public housing in Braintree comes in all sizes and types. We have apartment living, we have single-family homes. The Braintree Housing Authority has six properties and a homeownership program, and these programs are incredibly important to welcoming families and individuals to Braintree and ensuring that Braintree is a town that is open to everyone. And these properties serve such an important role in our community. So I want to, I know Mr. Guerrero couldn't join us tonight, but I would like to extend my thanks for his willingness to serve on this important board, and I'm very happy to support his appointment tonight. So with that, is there a motion?
Yes. Motion, upon the request of His Honor, the Mayor, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, and in accordance with Section 3-3 of the Charter of the Town of Braintree, approves the appointment of Michael Scott Guerrero as a tenant board member to the Braintree Housing Authority. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Is Counselor Berrika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, that ends our old business, oh, no, I'm sorry, we have our clerk of the town clerk with us this evening, forgive me, Clerk Casey, to go over a review of Voting Acts of 2022 and impact on local elections. The floor is yours, Clerk Casey.
Great, thank you, and thank you for having me this evening. Recently, the council members were provided a report on the Votes Act of 2022 and the impacts on local elections. The primary objective of this report was to highlight key legislative changes that require council input for the upcoming local elections, and with a secondary objective of providing a sensible timeline to enact some of the motions that you all are going to have to be making over the next several months. I'm going to highlight some of the key issues on the Vote Acts. It expanded early voting in person and early vote by mail to include local elections with opt-out and opt-in provisions, and that to be decided by local officials. It modified voter registrations. It mandated online voting portals for voters unable to mark a paper ballot independently due to disabilities. It legislated the assignment of sufficient police details for each building containing a polling location, as well as several less notable administrative changes. Early voting. I bring attention to the newly revised early voting process provision that provides members of the Town Council to decide to opt-in to early voting and/or opt-out of early voting by mail for local elections up to 45 days before the election. I strongly feel a decision must be made well before the 45 days prior to making that decision. It's just unfair to the elected officials who implement elections, and it's unfair to the voters to find out, are we going to have early voting in person, or we're going to have early voting by mail. In-person early voting is not required for local elections. The Town Council has the opportunity to opt-in at least 45 days prior to the election, but only upon the recommendation of the Board of Registers. On March 28, members of the Board of Registers held a duly posted meeting and voted to opt, not to opt-in for early voting for both the September 19th and the November 7th elections, citing anticipated low voter turnout, anticipated low voter turnout on Election Day, declining participation in early voting in person, and the availability, other available options to cast a ballot. I just want to point to the last two elections, there were state elections where early voting in persons was mandated. We had 14 days of early voting in September and 14 days for the November election. For the September election, we had 625 voters show up to vote in person. And on the November election, it's slightly over 1,400 voters. So, I'm a big person who'd like to use trend data, make sure everything that's happening is charted out, and what I've observed is that early voting in person, being back in 2016, there's a significant use of it. Four years later, and that was the presidential election, four years, the next presidential election, we had an equally high turnout. When we hit state elections, we see that decline significantly, and then when we see a state election primary, it's basically non-existent. So we're utilizing our resources, and what has happened is that with the introduction of early voting by mail, voters have chosen to utilize that option, less usage of the early vote in person, because essentially, they can also take advantage of absentee voting to vote early too, and they can do that by mail, especially if those who go down to Florida for the winter and such. Early voting by mail is now required for all elections, including special elections and primaries, with a provision for the Town Council to opt-out early voting by mail for local elections by a vote, again, to be taken 45 days prior to Election Day. Again, I'm going to be coming before you next month with some language for you all to make a decision. So during this time period, I've provided you notice, I want you all to think about it. Come see me, I'm available, we can discuss it, I can show you some trends, and then you make the decision so we can do whether we're going to do the early voting by mail. Except for, except for return postage costs, which will be paid by the Secretary of State's Office, for local elections, the town is responsible for all other causes associated within the early voting aspects. That's when you see, take a look at that budget book, would you all go out? You're going to see my budget's gone through the roof. And it's all essentially related to elections. Again, for next year, we have three elections coming up for fiscal '24. Why do I ask you to review it? Well, we have to provide communication to our voters. How do we do that? Do we do it through a postcard mailing? I did have one councilor approach me back a couple of months ago, relative to using the postcards like the state normally does for early voting for state elections. Unfortunately, the cost of that is like $50,000 for the two elections, so I want you to consider some of that way we're going to communicate for the people to reach out to it. That $50,000 has not been put in my budget. There are other ways that, again, my experience at my former career at Gillette, we looked at direct mail. There are two options at direct mail. We can take a look at the Braintree advertiser, we can spend about $5,000 for two elections, and we can reach all of the households that will have voters contained within them. We also can take advantage of our partners in electric and water departments, maybe by doing another insert in their mailings at any particular given month for each of the elections to notify them of the options of how to access a ballot. And again, I'm estimating about $5,000 if we utilize that vehicle. We can also look at signage on the roadways, which I normally put out there. Another big change is the Voting Act of 2022 changed the voter registration deadline from 20 days, which normally was a Wednesday night, and essentially, I'd have to have my staff stick around for four hours and maintain it. The 10 days will always fall on a Saturday, whereas if you're back from Tuesday, which is normally Election Day, 10 days is Saturday. They require you to have early voting in person, beginning at 8:30 in the morning till 5 o'clock at night, very costly. Voter registrations, when we have the extended hours, it's the last day of voter registration, has been poorly attended. It's basically It basically is zero. Once in a while, we'll get one or two individuals. There's some, a mass general law approved in 1951, which will allow us to opt-out of that and move the last day of voter registration to Friday, therefore only allowing my staff to work until 5 o'clock and having a weekend with their family during election season.
Clerk Casey, let me just stop you for a second. Can you, and I know we talked about making sure this gets on an earlier agenda from the 45 days, if you can prepare all of these bullet points in writing for the council, then we will be able to review them ahead, and that will be, I think?
That is my intention, as I stated earlier, that we will have language for you, which will come about at certain times during the upcoming months, because election days only, the first day to pull papers is less than two months away, so we want to make sure all of these items are taken care of, and I need your support on taking care of the necessary legislative changes. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you Clerk Casey. Clerk Casey, pardon me, Counsel Reynolds has a quick question?
Just a point of clarification. So is the, you made mention of the registrars. Has to be a recommendation of the registrars as a first step before a council can make a vote?
That is for the early voting in person.
Correct.
Yes.
So that's correct.
That's correct.
My understanding. Is there an appeal process to that? Just, this is just for clarification purposes?
Um, there's nothing in the language that I saw that allows an appeal process.
So essentially, it just, it's a decision that is solely in the purview of the registrars of the community?
Only to a point. It's only when, two registrars, it has, if it, there's four registrars, it's a 50/50 if it went two and two, so if it comes out 50/50, it means that, and they were in favor of it, it would go forward. Okay? It was unanimous decision by the Board of Registers. So if they did vote in favor of it, you as a council then would have the opportunity to make a decision, do you want to opt into it?
Thank you.
And then, at that time, you have the option then.
And that would be part of what you'd provide to the council president?
Right.
As far as further clarification. Thank, thank you, Madam President.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you Clerk Casey. Thank you Counselor Reynolds. All right, with that, I would ask, is there a motion to move all measures under New Business to their respective committees?
So moved.
Thank you Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Barracca.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan.
All right, thank you very much. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 7:30 PM. As always, thank you so much to our B-CAM team for bringing the council to our residents who couldn't make it here this evening. Jerry Comack, Dave Eric, and Bill Needham, if you're watching from home, thank you so much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call to adjourn.
Counselor Barracca.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.